To our October sixteenth, Beffer Board of Education consent agenda meeting. We are going to do roll call.
Yes, Ms. Boynton.
Here.
Ms. Turner Birch.
Present.
Mr. Akins.
Here.
Ms. Macklin.
Here.
Ms. Carter.
Here, thank you so much. We are now going to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Alright, moving on, we are at two point zero one, which is our acknowledgement of goals. Please read those at your leisure. Next, we are going to do approval of minutes. Three point zero one is minutes from October second. Our work session, and then we have minutes from October ninth, our special meeting. Going with three point zero one, can I please have a motion?
So move.
Second, it's been motioned by Mrs. Boynton and second by Mrs. Macklin that we approve the minutes from October second's work session. Are there any questions at this time? Hearing none, roll call please.
Ms. Boynton.
Yes.
Ms. Macklin.
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Akins.
Yes.
Work session. May I have a motion, please? Right.
Say work session.
I'm sorry, not work session, special meeting. Please forgive me. From October ninth, special meeting.
Second.
It has been motioned by Mrs. Boynton and second by Mr. Akins that we approve the minutes from the October ninth special meeting. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Ms. Boynton.
Yes.
Mr. Akins.
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch.
Yes.
Ms. Macklin.
Yes.
Ms. Carter.
Yes, thank you, passes five to zero. We are now on to, um, for our awards, presentations, and communications. We are now going to have a presentation by our Columbus Intermediate School, so we are going to have Principal Jermaine Huff come on up.
Alright, good evening, um, good evening, board. Board President Carter, Superintendent Dr. Johnson. Um, we're going to give you just a quick snapshot of. A quick snapshot of some of the wonderful things that we do here at Columbus Intermediate School. As you know, this is our tagline, our mission, vision, um, and core values. Um, I believe this is one of the driving components of the Beffer City School District. We try to inspire everyone every day to achieve excellence. And once again, my name is Jermaine Huff, and I do have with me my Dean of Students, Ms. Carla Eberhard. This is our district one plan goals. Um, our building one plan goals are aligned directly to our district one plan goals. And our one plan goals are, um, striving for, uh, to improve achievement and to improve our district report card. And you'll see in our slideshow, um, some of the things that we do individually for our one plan goal that aligns directly to that. Um, we teach ELA, math, science, social studies, and our electives, um, which are art, social, uh, SEL health, music, physical education, and world language. Um, so we have two instructional styles that we really focus on. Um, our MTSS, which stands for our multi-tiered system of support. So there's three levels to that. Um, the universal support is for all students. And then we have targeted support for students who are at risk, and then our highest would be our individual support for students who have, you know, very intensive challenges. Also, we use, uh, John, John Hattie's, um, zones of effective strategies. Our building, he has a lot of effective strategy, but our building, um, focuses on three. And that is feedback, direct instruction, and cooperative learning. So here are our Columbus goals, um, individual goals. Um, this will be completed by the end of 2028. We want to improve our report card rating in the area of early literacy, gap closing, and achievement in, um, in ELA and math by two percentage points each year. And then our second goal is to decrease chronic absenteeism within, uh, uh, with two, within two percent each year. We want to decrease our chronic absenteeism, but we want to increase our attendance. And how are we going to do it? In ELA and math, we're going to have differentiated instructive groups. Also, small group instruction, which, um, is, um, called WIN, and WIN stands for what I need. Also, we want to implement, um, the racist strategy. It's a race writing strategy that we've, we've started to implement that will be effective. And in Columbus Intermediate, we do have a high, uh, English language learner population, so we, we're going to start focusing on, on those students as well to make sure that they become proficient. With attendance, we want to focus more on analyzing data and let the data make the, help us make the decisions. We need to look at some of the targeted subgroups that are not coming to school and find out why they're not coming to school. And we do have bi-weekly attendance meetings with our SEL staff and our guidance counselors to find out ways that we can, uh, incentivize and motivate our students. Also making, uh, phone calls, telling the parents to find out, um, what the difficulties is for students who are not, um, coming to school. And then we use our MTSS system to monitor that, that attendance.
So with this slide, this is our, uh, state of Ohio school report card. And for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year, we did receive a three point five star rating out of five. And so we're very happy about that, but we do see that we still have some work to do in the areas of achievement and early, early literacy. Um, and so this here is a snapshot of some of the progress that our students made last year. If you take notice of the colors, the green designates that students met the expectation for growth. Light blue was exceeding the expectation, and then dark blue was exceeding the expectation by a significant amount. Uh, this first slide here, this is, uh, baseline data from our fall diagnostic through the iReady platform for reading. And as Mr. Huff mentioned, we have the three-tier model for MTSS, um, for instruction. And as you can see, we do have about fifty percent of our students who are at the tier three stage, which is the intensive support. But this is typical of what you would see at the beginning of the school year. Um, and we expect for that to decrease as our students are getting exposed to quality tier one instruction. And then also, this is another snapshot. This is our math diagnostic for the beginning of the year. Again, we currently have students that are about fifty percent or over at tier three, but again, when the school year starts, we kind of see that, but as the instruction goes and students are learning more, that will decrease. Um, we also not only are looking at how we are going to service our students academically, we are also looking at how we service the whole child, and that's where social emotional learning comes in. And so social emotional learning is a model where students are taught to regulate their emotions and then also to be able to interact with their peers socially. And so at Columbus, we have several different things. I'm not going to read through all of those. But, um, one of the most effective things that we have are, are SEL groups, and those are run by our counselors and our mental health therapists, where they give our children the tools that they need to interact with their peers every day. And then we also have smaller groups where we have students that might have more specific needs, and they run those as well.
Uh, we have so much negativity in the world. We, we want to, we want to feed positivity into our, into our babies. And so this is our, our daily morning affirmation that we say every single day. Um, we say it every single day during, uh, morning announcements, and our students say it with us. We want them to start their day off on a positive note. Um, and so this is what we do during our morning announcements every single day. Um, our partnership with the Cleveland Browns, um, staying the game has been a Godsend for us. Um, we want to thank the Cleveland Browns for the, all the incentives and the gifts that they give us from, from T-shirts to footballs to posters. Um, that really motivates our students. We also have individualized incentives, um, for students who come to school, and we also have classroom incentives for the higher, the highest, uh, classroom attendance. And so that is something that we really hold a hat on, and, um, they really, um, enjoy. Uh, community and family engagement is, I feel like it's the final piece of the three. We need, we have part, we want to develop a, a strong partnership with our parents because, um, that, that homeschool relationship, we want to make sure it's strong. So our parents can reinforce all of the academics, um, that we have inside of school. They can take that home and, uh, reinforce it and kind of help us out. A lot of these programs that you see that are listed are Title One funded programs. We try to use our Title One funds responsibly, um, and to educate, um, our, educate our families, um, have fun, um, and, and build community. And these are some of our upcoming, um, engagements. Um, we invite everyone to attend if you want to. We have our ELA night, math night, uh, Black History Month dinner and a book, um, where we read a, we read a book, um, each Wednesday during Black History Month, African-American book, uh, from an African-American author, um, in the month of February, and then we have our SEL, uh, family engagement night. And finally, we have a quick video, um, for you to see kind of some of the things that happen here at Columbus Intermediate. And hopefully it works. Alright. Want to take some time for questions if the board has any questions.
Uh, sure, I want to say thank you for doing the presentation. Um, I'll let the questions come. If there are any, I'm sure there are.
Um, yes, I, can you go to your, to your tiers regarding reading and math? I wanted to know if you can provide any information on how many students per grade level that fifty percent, that thirty-five, and that seven actually makes up?
Yes, ma'am. So you, for tier three, it's two hundred and five. Tier two is one forty-two, and tier one is twenty-six.
No, I'm not saying numbers of students, I'm saying grade levels. So do you actually know what grade levels don't composition, or is it all of the grade levels inclusive?
This is the entire school, but we can provide that information if that's something.
Yes, I'd just like to see the breakdown. So like, is predominance of the average at the third grade level, or what's the youngest?
Yeah.
Yeah, so third grade, uh, would be the oldest age, right?
Third is the youngest.
The youngest age, and the fifth is the oldest. So yes, I would like to see a comparison and the difference of where the, where they lie within the third. And that's for both reading and math.
Yeah, we can definitely get that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. First, uh, thank you for the presentation, and congratulations on your three point five stars. That certainly meets the state expectations. I know what we're striving for, and you guys are on your way. But I do want to go back to the report card, uh, slide, please. And on that slide, it does show, uh, the areas where, uh, where you receive the stars. And one, I just want to know just one thing, under achievement, because I was looking at that, and I do think that's your lowest. I'm trying to find the slide now. I wrote my note here about the slide, where the slide is. So tell me, would you explain, uh, to us, uh, about the achievement? What, I, I guess, what it all encompassed, and what, uh, what are you going to do this year?
So, so achievement, um, speaks to how many students are proficient in the grade level, um, for the O, the OST, the ELA OST, as well as the math OST. And so, um, every decision that we make at Columbus is data-driven. So what we're going to be doing is analyzing that data to see where the deficits lie. And then, as Mr. Huff spoke to our intervention groups, we're going to do the targeted intervention to speak to where our students need the most need, or have the most need. Okay, and?
And then we want to, and then we, like I told you, um, we had said in the pre- presentation, uh, we have Title One funds. So we want to leverage those Title One funds to try to focus on those deficit, um, areas, um, in early literacy and in achievement. So that's in the, that's in the, in the, the future to, to use those funds effectively to try to, um, focus on, possibly having some, some sort of after-school, um, tutoring or after-school, uh, program to where we can target some of those, those students that needed additional intervention, um, outside of the school time.
And my next question on that, thank you, uh, in regards to looking at that data, and I, I love it that you're going to really analyze the data to see what you need to do maybe differently or just more of, uh, this school year. Um, so I just want to know, how do you get your teachers prepared for that particular, looking at that data? And what they're going to do, because I know they're doing a great job, and I just wanted to know what you, you know, in addition to the small group instruction, and especially with analyzing the data, what's, what's in place for that?
Um, so we have, we have, uh, TBT time, um, where, where our teachers meet as a group to analyze the data, look at the data. Um, but when you talk about, um, how do we get our teachers prepared, I think our, we have, we have the best teachers in the district. They already come prepared. Um, they're already ready to, um, they're already ready to, uh, do a deep dive and analyze the data. Um, it's kind of, it's, it's, it's not that hard to get them motivated to, to want to, to move our students up, um, a level, a star level, um, to get to a, a, a level of excellence. So, um, but we do, we do guide them, and we do check in on them and make sure that we're, we're kind of doing the things that we need to do.
Yeah, that, that, um, thank you. That was not what I was insinuating, if, what I gather from that. But what I do want to say about that is, because it is important that you know how to analyze the data as well as your educators. And I, I'm really big on that, and I'm just telling you that. And because that, we, they need to know as well what to do and how to analyze the data and how that data, as you say, drive instruction. I know we have great teachers, or you wouldn't have a three point five because that's their work. That's the impact they're making on the students and the students' willingness to learn because they feel like they belong in a community. And I see that at Columbus, so, I mean, uh, yeah, Columbus. So I just wanted, I just wanted to know that. Because I know it's important that, um, there's some PD, professional development. And actually, that's what I really was looking for, how much PD is provided for your teachers in analyzing data. Because, and I just, and I'm asking that question because I, I have to reference when I was in the classroom how important that was, that we had the support, not only from the principal, but also from our ESC representatives, just to say. Those people come out and they do share how to read that data. So it's so important because I personally took the stars very personal. I did. I was very intentional about looking at that and looking at those areas and see how many chi, how my, how many of my students fell in that tier one, tier two, tier three group, and in the areas that needed to be done. So that, that's what I was actually getting to, to look at how important the PD is and, and that, and that's, that, that analyzing the data happening at that time and taking it to heart on what, how are you going to move the instructions?
Yes, and, and to, to kind of, to, to kind of piggyback on what you said, um, two things. Number one, um, uh, we have, uh, we have Mindy Geske come in from the ESC, um, and she, she did a, she did a PD with our, um, our DOT. And, and now, um, we are charged with getting her to Columbus because she has such, so much valuable information to offer our teachers and give our teachers. So we're in the process of doing that. And on top of that, um, Ms. Eberhard and myself have charged ourselves with establishing a kind of a in-house PD series because we have scout, we have great, great, smart teachers who know what they're doing. Um, but we want to, we're kind of pushing them to the forefront in our staff meetings to say, hey, let's do a mini PD on the race strategy. Let's do a mini PD on, you know, on, on, on math. Um, because that way, um, learning from your peers is kind of like the best way to do it, um, instead of learning from, from strangers. So we are char, we charged ourselves, one of our individual goals is to have more in-house PDs during staff meetings. And not just doing it one time, but doing it throughout the year.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
I just want to say keep up the great work. Um, definitely keep being an example. And, uh, keep making our, our babies happy. And keep, and keep teaching them, and, and obviously you're doing something right. You've got a three point five, and we appreciate you doing all the hard work. Um, it starts from the top and goes down, so keep working hard. Thank you so much.
I did have one more thing, though. Um, talking about the, uh, report card, within the achievement and early literacy, those can, were basically also spoken to through the tiers, right? Those are relative to those. Um, with that, where you spoke to, um, using Title One funds to help support that, are you, would you be saying like using title tutors or to assist it in those gaps? Possibly?
Right, we, right now, we have actually been actively looking for title tutors. We have not been able to secure candidates for the position, but yes, that would apply to us.
Okay.
And we don't want to just, when we're talking about using title tutors, um, we just don't want to hire, uh, any title two off the street who is not effective just to say that we have a title tutor.
Right.
We need title tutors that's really going to do what they say they're going to do because our, our, our students are at a deficit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, the progress slide or this one here?
The one with the, it's like a table. That one there. Um, you know, why is there no, um, progress stated for sixth grade in math and science?
We did not have enough students that, um, took that test. There needs to be at least ten students that, and those would be fifth grade students that are gifted that would be taking that sixth grade content, but we didn't have enough to, um, for it to table onto the data.
Okay.
So that, so that data speaks to our gifted, our gifted students. That's why you see the sixth grade, the fifth grade students that are, that are taking the sixth grade. So they're really fifth graders, but they're gifted and they take sixth grade.
Okay.
So that's why you have that one bar.
So you have less than ten?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, any additional questions? Alright, hearing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Um, may I have a motion? For our consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mrs. Boynton, second by Mrs. Macklin, that we approve the, um, consent agenda as presented. Are there any questions?
Um, yes, I have one as it pertains to Mr. Robert Rakowski as a resignation for certified teacher. Is that? Um, okay, I was just wondering that.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Boynton.
Yes.
Ms. Macklin.
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch.
No.
Mr. Akins abstaining. And Ms. Carter.
Yes. Passes three to zero with one abstention.
I will let, um, Dr. Jackson.
Three to one.
I'm sorry, three to one, I'm sorry.
One abstention.
Thank you.
Um, and just, I don't know if you want me to give clarity purposes. There was a question. Because I don't want, um, people to think that Mrs. Turner Birch said no to everything in there, but she did, she asked a question about one specific thing. And because it's dealing with personnel and we can't discuss it in public session, not that it's a bad thing, but that's the reason why. So I don't want, you know, people that are here that, you know, are, um, hiring or trying to retire, that she's saying no to everything in there. Um, but we do have a, a retiree here, um, Ms. Sullins, and, um, it'll be a huge loss uh, to the district and all the work that you've done in the library. But we also know that this is a congratulations, uh, to you. So, um, we wish you the best on your new journey, and we just thank you for all the dedication that you've had, um, for our students and our staff. So thank you. I didn't know if there was anything else you wanted to say before I mentioned the other individual. Did you want to say anything, Ms. Sullins?
Thank you.
Congratulations, you have done, uh, some great work, Ms. Sullins, as I remember previously working with you as a sub, and you brought in some great content when you were there. Um, but for clarity, I also don't need to be cleared up on record. Thank you.
I wasn't trying to clear you up, but I was speaking to you.
Okay.
It was just to make sure that the public knew, it was a.
I was speaking for you.
It was employee information that we can't speak of in public record.
That was on the next piece, which we'll talk about it anyway, but thank you, we can move on.
Thank you so much.
I know, I'm like.
And then we have another, uh, retiree?
Yes, we do. We have another retiree, and I do apologize again. Um, Wendy Whaley, I don't see Wendy here. But again, um, amazing over at Central, um, so involved outside of the classroom.
Alrighty, thank you so much. We are now on to six point zero one, where the audience may address the board. Ms. Boynton, can you please read the policy?
Yes. Uh, visitors are always welcome to our board meetings. If you wish to address the board during the audience participation portion of the meeting, you need to have completed this form and submitted it to our treasurer. Each person will, will be allotted three minutes. A maximum of thirty minutes will be permitted for public participation at this meeting. No person may speak twice until all who wish to speak have had the opportunity to do so.
Um, and as a reminder, we can only speak about items that are on this agenda. So we are not able to accept cards that were turned in for items that are not a part of this agenda. Or personnel matters.
Understand, it's personnel, so we cannot talk about, excuse me, we can, we cannot talk about personnel. That is, that's information.
You know what, we need to respect our meeting, please. Thank you. You know what?
Anything personnel we cannot talk about?
Ones that we can.
No, the ones that are not personnel, we will call you up.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, we will. Yes, we will have you, we will have you come up. We're just making sure everybody's able to read the cards at this moment. Uh, we do have a clock, so you will be timed. So give us one moment as everybody is reading the cards. We will give them back to our treasurer. He will call you up. Please know that you will be cut off after your three minutes. If that is something we can answer, we will answer it. This is not anything new that we've done from any other meeting. If it's something we can answer, we will.
Uh, Michael Lester, you can come up.
Not a problem. He's going to, ma'am.
I don't need no microphone. So, uh, I am a pastor here, not in Beffer, but I'm in Cleveland, and I support the school on everything that they do. And I support, uh, the children are most important. My daughter actually goes here, so that's why I feel like I can actually ask a question. But, uh, my concern was the unauthorized walkouts. Uh, I know that the kids, it's okay for you to walk out if you know what you're doing it for. But how do we stop that from happening? Because it disrupts not just the kids who are trying to learn, but it takes the kids into another area where they don't develop anymore. They don't learn, they focus on something else. So throughout the year now, their concern for the next three, four weeks is another item that has nothing to do with education. And then they get, uh, sidebarred. So now you have to play makeup with the kids and their education. How do we address that? Because that, that's something that affects the community.
Um, thank you so much. Um, I first would like to state that the most important thing we can do is to teach our children how to advocate for what, like, they do believe in. Um, though we don't always agree with, you know, everything, I think the first part of that is education and us modeling how to appropriately. Um, though we don't always agree with, you know, everything, I think the first part of that is education and us modeling how to appropriately advocate for ourselves. Um, the other part of that is that I think we, one, uh, we have had some internal discussions about that. Um, I was not aware, um, nor many of the board members. So even though I still, um, apologize for that because my heart sank, to be honest, to have kids walking out of the building. When we have mass shootings every day. And they went outside to the front lawn. Um, so not only were they at risk, but our security was at risk. Um, and those adults that were out there with them. So not only did I receive concerns from you, but I will be honest and state that I did receive concerns from parents. Asking why their students were permitted to go outside. Why weren't they notified that they went outside? So the very next day, um, the leaders in the building did, um, reach out to the staff. Um, and make sure that they double check the attendance, um, because that's the other hard part about it is when they walk out the building, not following procedure and protocol. The worst thing that you can do is get that call that either something happened to your child or we as a school district get a call saying, my child did not come home. So my plea is to our parents as well to please have that conversation with your children and remind them. We just had a situation at Columbus in Heskett where we had to send a message home because we had some ridiculous adults stopping children on the way to school, trying to lure them into the car. God forbid, and unfortunately, the sad part about this is that adults led them to go outside. My communications consultant just came back from a professional development where they talked about social media. And that is how they lure kids. They pull the fire alarm in the building or they're sending anonymous messages and they're posting them on social media saying, go outside at such and such a time. And what do our children do? They don't know. They don't understand. So I'm begging the adults that assisted and that encouraged this, you don't have to agree with me. But how many people in here have seen a child at school take their last breath? I've seen it twice. That is not what we want. We have the amazing security team, but no plan is guaranteed. But I can tell you the best plan is not outside. So I think that is my plea. We did have conversations with staff. We will continue to have conversations with staff. There's accountability as well internally because that is against board policy. It's against Ohio revised code. It's against Ohio ethics as well for us to create an unsafe environment for children. So I appreciate your concern, but it is being addressed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I have your card back? Doctor Johnson, can you, can you speak on the fact that someone were threatened with suspension and expulsion for not, for going outside?
No, I don't know who was threatened with suspension and expulsion, but I will tell you that it is against board policy. So what we did state, and I do have this communication in writing to administration as I document everything that I do, is that when the administration asked me how to handle this, I said just what I just said right here. I explained the safety concerns. I even had multiple conversations with our union as well, and I thank you as well. Um, for your support in this, a communication went to staff telling them not to do this from both unions, BEA and OPSI. In return, I was asked in front of several staff members in our meeting, how will do, how do we handle this? It's a cut. I stated this is a cut. So we treat it like a cut. And I said, we treat it like an unexcused absence. And in your classroom, how have you consistently addressed this? Nobody at Central Office said expel somebody. Nobody said, give them ten days out of school suspension. The worst thing you can do for a kid that might not want to be here is send them home. So we want to keep kids in school. So that is how we handled it. So I'm not sure who communicated that, um, that somebody was told that they would be suspended. But if somebody got that information, I, it would help me to know who communicated it. So we can address that as well and just reiterate what our policy is.
Okay. Yes, cause I was gonna speak to that as well, but also the canceling of a football season was also stated along with that. So we wanted to make sure that students are not being threatened with such things.
I've not heard that. I'm not sure if that was another social media thing, but I'm not aware of.
That was at Heskett, right?
Mm-mm. I'm not aware of that. Or where that came from, so I can't speak to, about it, but.
Okay. What about teachers actually blockading children in and, and not allowing them to leave out?
Yeah, sitting by doors, blocking them in.
This is audience participation. We, this can go to the next one.
Okay.
Let's not. So we're going to move on to the next card.
Angela Waters?
I do have a little extra, we have open seats.
Can you come? So you have to be on the microphone. Thank you.
We have open seats that are in here. Is there a reason why we're refusing to let people in?
We are at capacity. We are allowed to have, well, there's still people in the back standing.
I have an open.
Would you ask that's your question, please? Thank you. Thank you. We, 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 I understand what you're asking, but we are at capacity.
That's ridiculous. I'm just saying this isn't.
Per the fire department, they told us we cannot go over seventy-five.
Okay.
And there's more than seventy-five in here?
Start your start the clock.
Maybe if some of your security would move out there, maybe some of the paying taxpayers.
Can you please ask your question?
That is one of my questions. Why, why are taxpayers are not, uh, being allowed in here? That's one of them. My next question is, is there, I see you took it off the agenda, but is there a reason why we were moving the Bear program into, uh, less than a desirable strip mall?
We are having additional conversations about that, so we would not be able to talk about that at this time.
I, I mean, I guess I can, but I'm okay with it. I mean, I feel like, uh, that is an appropriate question to ask, to be honest with you. Um, we took it off the agenda because I did receive, um, communication that there needed to be more discussion about it. Um, so nothing moves until the board says it moves, right? And so though we have had some previous discussions about where it can go, that is an option. But I've said to the board, and I think we all have said to the board, if you have some options for us, then we would love to hear where they could go. Um, we have one of the best programs in the area. Um, I just had a conversation with someone today, um, that talked about what we're doing in special education and specifically for our students with autism. The most important thing that we can do is provide opportunities for our babies in-house and stop sending them outside of the district. They have a right to a free and appropriate education right here. And I thank this Board of Education for providing a continuum of services for every single child. So the Bear program will need to go somewhere because we are as a society having more and more children come to our schools diagnosed with autism. And so they are thriving in this environment. It is not a forever environment. Some kids might be there two weeks. Some kids might be there six months. Some kids might be there a whole year. We have kids coming from out of district placements back in, um, but we have looked in all four municipalities, um, for a space. Um, if there's recommendations, we're more than willing to take them. But one, um, I can have Taylor speak to the amount of money we're saving. That's not her time. We're gonna give you time back. But, um, the amount of money we're actually saving by keeping our children, because I think I read somewhere that someone's saying we're not being fiscally responsible. When actually we're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars by having such a program. But my concern is not that they're not part of our school district. They should be. They should be in our schools. Why are we having them separated? And are they going, and we're building very expensive new schools. Are they gonna be included in that along with the Excel program? And then my understanding is, is, did this board sign a lease for that building? My understanding is that there has been a lease signed and somebody has it. They have seen it. Well, we do have a lease, but as I just stated, the board. How did that happen? How did you sign a lease?
Can't you finish?
She needs to finish. Please let her finish.
So you asked some questions and I'm gonna answer every single one of your questions. The very first question you ask is are the children going to be in the new buildings? One of the things that I just explained was something called a continuum of services for the least restrictive environment. We already have a program within the schools for students that have been identified with autism. The next step, if a student is not thriving within the building, is that there must be a place for them to thrive. And it's typically outside of the district where it's ninety thousand dollars for one child. That's not even including how much it costs to, uh, to, um, send them there either in private transportation or on a school bus. And we already know we don't have bus drivers. Um, so it will not be in the buildings because we already have a program in the buildings. This is the next step of continuum of services before a student goes out of the district. Or if a student is coming back from out of district placement, this is a place for them to transition back into the building. Why can't they be included in the new buildings, that group too? And, and once again, how, did these board members know that you signed a lease?
There is no lease.
There isn't? First, the very, they give us a lease.
There's nothing signed.
They give us a lease. We act, they give us, we give us a lease. We get, they give the lease to us.
We have to review.
Then it comes to the board as is, but nothing moves forward until they vote on that. So yes, there is a lease.
But it's not signed because it's off of the agenda.
But I will tell you, I'm not gonna sit here and act like there wasn't a discussion with the Board of Education. There are, yes, there was, and I did explain and I did communicate where this was, the cost of it. So there was a lease. The lease was signed, so it to come, next, the next step is for it to come to the board, for the board to vote on it. How are we paying for that? We have no money. This school district has no money, but it, we don't.
The Bear program is paid for, uh, federal funds, IDEA Part B.
Okay, my last, my last comment and then I'm just done. I'll be coming, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to be coming to these meetings even though my kids have been graduated for some time because. This, this is like off, this is just crazy.
That would be great. We'd like to have people come.
Love to see you at the meetings.
But, you, board members, you do know that you're in charge. You can make, then do the right thing, please.
We realize that.
Reminds us of.
Thank you.
Can I say something? We are doing the right thing. So, good job, board.
Thank you. Next?
Um, don't look at that. Uh, Sam Randall?
No, he wasn't. Not at all.
Like, they encourage this kind of behavior, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Um, so, I'm Sam Randall. I'm a parent of students in the district. And then, um, also as a professional, I'm a landscape architect.
Mm-hmm.
And I noticed that several of the oak trees on the high school campus have been marked for removal. And I just wanted to follow up and see what has been approved or planned for that, for the high school. Cause, uh, I'm aware, I stopped at the building department and actually looked, there haven't been plans submitted yet for the high school. So I would just hope that we aren't removing mature trees prematurely before plans have been approved.
Um, I think some things have been, I think we can, if we can talk about that, cause I, actually the special projects director, um, his grandbaby was just born today, so he's not here. Um, but Tad can follow up with you to talk to you about that. We are, um, very close to presenting the renderings of it. So thus far, I think some budgets have been shared and things of that nature, but, um, Tad can talk to you about where they are with things. Um, and the timeline of everything and the order that it will happen in. But we'll follow the same process we did for the primary building, um, as well as the middle school in terms of the order. And I think you were on those committees, yeah, you were on those committees.
I was on a lot of committees for, um, the planning. Um, I felt like communication stopped once the plan, like, once the, once the decision to build the schools was created or was approved. I felt like I stopped receiving communication in regards to what the plans of the, um, buildings might look like or any of that type of stuff.
So I think what we've been doing is actually going out to the municipalities in the council meetings. The board members, um, each month, um, have their community meetings. Um, I think you guys have gone to all four communities. And they have GPD and Panzika actually go to those meetings. In addition to that, um, they're coming here. So I love to hear that people will come here to the meetings. Um, nothing much has really happened, other than kind of the behind the scenes type stuff.
And that's what I'm kind of, as a landscape architect, I'm interested in that behind the scenes part. And I would just hope that, um, we've had a lot of thought into which trees really need to come out and which ones can't be saved. Because mature hundred-year-old oak trees can't be replaced.
Well, it's gonna depend on where the road has to go. And so that is driven by zoning and things of that nature. So there's not really too much say in that. Um, so that's.
I, I design, I, I, I do design projects. I'm familiar with that. So, thank you.
Yeah, that's the issue.
Alright. So we'll have Tad, um.
So.
I have your, your number on the card, so we'll have Tad give you a call.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Stacy Roberts?
Hi, I'm Stacy, uh, Tench Roberts, uh, six fifty Johnson Avenue in Bedford. Uh, I'm four year, or four times, my family has lived in Bedford for a hundred and fifty years. My kids have all gone through the district. I have, my sister has, my dad has, my parents, my grandparents met at Central, so I'm longstanding Bedfordite, alright? Where did the money, the two plus million dollars that you spent on the new admin building come from?
It came from bond interest earnings, which is opposite from the bond money that was passed.
It came from bond interest rates?
That's correct. When you get a hundred and sixty-one million dollars, you earn a lot of interest on it.
So we made two, two point five million dollars in interest on that, on the money that you already took out?
The district's actually making more money than that and most of it's going to the new building.
So bond money was, bond money technically was not used?
Not for the new admin building. Correct.
Okay. Gotcha.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping us clear that up. Alright, next?
Um, Alfred, Alfred Parrish? Yes. There you go.
Alright.
Before you start the clock, I just want to say that, uh, you all have a hard job.
Thank you.
Very difficult job, absolutely. And I know a lot of you personally, I take my hat off to you. You have a hard job. But the questions that I have here, they're not gonna be that difficult. They're about policy.
Okay.
And my question is, is a district policy to place an administrator on leave with or without board approval? That's the, the first one. The second question is, go, go right ahead.
Um, it's up to you if you want me to answer one or both.
Go, go right ahead.
Um, under not just board policy, but Ohio revised code, um, the only individuals that report to the board are the superintendent and the treasurer. So every other person, um, in his department reports to him. All other staff by law report to me. So therefore, board members, they can't put somebody on leave, like it's the superintendent, just like snow days and things of that nature as well. Or when staff members are moved, um, they're out the district, um, it comes from myself. Um, it comes from myself for the teachers and certified, other than the individuals in his department.
Okay, so-
And we follow the board policies.
Gotcha. So, so, there's rumors.
I will state though, prior to someone being on there, there are, like you said, the conversations when I can, cause sometimes it happens simultaneously, but it depends on whether it's an internal issue as to why they're on leave or if it's an external issue, something happened outside as a work thing.
Totally understand. And without specifics, without specifics, no names, anything like that, how many administrators have been placed on leave past or, or currently without board knowledge?
None.
Without board what?
Without bor- board knowledge.
Oh, board knowledge.
I mean, I can't speak to that because typically what happens is I will communicate to the board president, vice president and things of that nature. I mean, I don't know of a time that I've had someone.
So it's board, board, uh, let's see my two minutes. Uh, it, it's board knowledge then when a person is placed on leave, or not?
I am trying to think about what I can say and what I can't say. Again, it depends on, it depends on what the rationale is. For example, um, if there's like an FMLA or something, you know what I mean? Like no, I'm not going to, that's why I'm trying to not, I'm trying to be dis-
I understand.
You know what I mean? Cause people don't know, I think people think they know why somebody might be on leave, but they often don't know the truth about why a person is on leave. Um, but there are times where the board will not know, um, because it might be for a medical reason.
Okay, I, I totally understand. And, and, and it's the rumors that, that the board should know, it's the rumors that we hear. So sometimes when you, if, I know, I know, I know you can't speak to specifics, but-
Can I say this? I hate that there's rumors out there because then that sends everything into an uproar, especially when people don't know everything. Don't, everybody doesn't know the full truth of what's going on, so those rumors happen. Negativity and everything happens and then it's harder to get to the point at hand and get to the end goal when you need to because now there's all this interruption that, I'm not saying it's not, I'm not, it, it's, it's, there's only so much transparency we can do when there's policies involved. We cannot put every, I mean, the law, we can't put everything out in public. So understand that, also, let me also say this. There's a lot of misinformation of what the board does and does not do. Per OSBA, I'm gonna read it, because they think that we do everything in the school, we don't. The role and function of board members are often misinterpreted by the public. The board is a policymaking body and members are the chief advisors to the superintendent on community attitudes. Board members do not manage the day-to-day operations of a school district. This is why we have a superintendent to make sure she's the one running the day-to-day.
Board members do not deal in the operations of day-to-day, however, board members are to ensure that the day-to-day operations are being conducted in an effective manner.
But we're also not to interfere in a negative way either. And we need to make sure we're following our policies.
Why are we, we are answering.
Okay, we, we're, we're gonna, and we'll have, we'll have our-
And I'm answering as well, cause I'm giving full clarity of what that looks like.
You didn't even let her finish.
I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you so much, Mr. Parrish, sorry about that.
The Ohio Revised Code, which is the statute of the state, section one twenty-four point three eight eight, allows appointing authorities to place administrators on administrative leave with pay for reasons of health or safety. This type of leave is at the discretion of the appointed ther- uh, authority, at the discretion of the appointing thor- authority, is to be paid at the employee's base rate and it's, and its duration is also at the authority's discretion. The duration is also at the authority's discretion, but should not exceed the duration of the situation for which the leave was granted. Provisions for administrative leave, reasons for, an administrator can be placed on leave if their health or safety or the safety of others or property entrusted to them could be adversely, adversely affected. The duration-
Okay, so we are going to move on.
Is concerned of the lead, length of the leave.
We are done now, but-
Is determined by the appointed authority. But should not exceed the length of the situation that prompted the leave.
allowable.
We gonna mention the ORC in the code? I think people should understand what they're saying.
I, I agree with you that, um, I agree, Ms. Turner Birch, in terms of the, the whole piece of it and understanding the entire piece. I just don't want, I also will tell people that no decision is ever made that is a violation because I only make moves when I am told by the board's attorney to make those moves. I feel like that is also a misunderstanding as well is that there's this perception that there's some solo decisions being made and that is not the case. Um, also, I feel like going back to, um, I appreciate the clarity. The unfortunate part is, I honestly just was listening to my pastor sermon. We talked about people, excuse me, I'm sorry, excuse me. Where they talked about social media today and the facts that unfortunately, um, are interpreted as by opinions. And so I would also like to just ask people to think about individuals that might be in a situation because as a result of a lot of assumptions, they're the individuals being hurt. Um, and that is the sad part about it at the end of the day is I feel like there's this assumption that we can do more than what we do and therefore as a result of us not being able to do it, I understand people's positions that leaves them to feel like something's being hidden or why can't we say more? Um, but I just ask that people think about the individuals that are involved.
Well, honestly, the board should be notified of everything as well because we have a few people on the boards that know what's going on. Personally, I have no idea why one of them is even on leave. And as a board member, I think I should know that, that information.
Well, you know what? I, I totally, I totally agree, you know what? I totally agree with you, Mr. Akins, and I feel like, and not just for one thing. Board members should be involved, um, in all aspects of communication, not just one situation. So I appreciate the, the desire to have the knowledge, but when I send out weekly notes that are three pages long and they're not read, that have a whole lot of information to you as well as to the board, um, attorney and they're never read, or when we have the board agenda and it's the school board's agenda that is not read, I just ask that it be ongoing communications. So if there is to be communications or I s- might send messages, but I don't get a response, so I don't know, so then I'm told some days to call this number, some days to call that. So I feel like there just needs to be some consistency because I agree with you that there needs to be a discussion about ongoing engagement, ongoing desire to have the knowledge because I do feel that you should know. And I feel like in terms of the protocols, if the protocols are clear, um, I can't disagree with you more.
Cause I know in the past that we've been all told when someone's being put on leave beforehand, I didn't find out until I saw it on social media.
Well, the sad part about it is I feel like there were some assumptions about when a person actually went on leave. And it's sad because, um, I too was surprised that it had been communicated that a person was on leave or a person might be terminated or a person might be this or that when most of the time I've only communicated with the board or that individual. So I don't know how things get out on social media. But again, I would say, can we please think about the people that are involved at the end of the day?
Well, to add that, as, as a board member and as a parent of students in the district and the particular space of which said individuals are on leave or parents weren't even communicating. It is just a simple fact of if the actual, uh, disruption to the school took place, which is a normal operation, were not the same or being operated in the same thing, then there, there should have been some type of communication. I understand for per- for personnel reasons, a lot of things can't be communicated, especially names and things like that. However, there should have been something indicating, um, something that parents knew that an individual was not operating the building or the building was not being operated at a normal capacity as it normally does until it hit the streets, which is social media and or parents chattering or talking about that.
So again, I would just, I guess again, I would like to say that only happens in the communication gets to the streets as a result of either whatever communications I did send out to the board or that individual. Because I did not get a chance a lot of times to communicate. So I also will explain that I don't feel that it's fair to assume that an individual is on leave without even having conversations first. So the first thing that happens is you might have some information that comes in. You might, you, then you would have the information with the individuals involved. And before you can even have that conversation with the board, information gets to social media. I feel like that's a problem. Or the information does come to you guys and it gets to social media.
I just, just for protocol purposes, just moving forward, if things are disruption to the building, because you talked about protests are a disruption and that should be communicated, well, anytime that there is a situation of some type of disruption to normal C operations, which is having principals or whoever in your building or just normal operations, that it be communicated to the board.
To ten, to the entire board.
The entire board. And, and I'm-
I found out, everybody found out on social media like you did.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we all found out through, through social media and or ear to the street.
She didn't even have a trip because, uh, that is not, so, huh, I'm sorry, no, speak.
I, I, you know what, it's not a funny ma- it's not a funny matter. It's not a funny matter, but-
You're not going to talk to the ones like, so can we move on?
So we are now going to move on on this, on this, the schedule.
I, one of the things that I was, I would say, because this was on the record, is again, I'm at peace because I know for a fact that I've had communications, the appropriate communications.
I need people to stop yelling out loud, please, as we are trying to speak, this is a meeting of the board. And I am asking that all of the, the chatter, please. Can you please speak? Thank you.
I will, and I feel like the sad part about it is all the great things that are happening in Bedford. They said, all the great things that are happening in Bedford, this is what, the great things that are happening in Bedford is we haven't had a, 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 uh, operating levy on the ballot in how many years? The other thing is that I was asked to do in order to pass a bond was for us to bring back our career tech programs. We did that. I was told and our teachers were told, this board was told, it couldn't happen. We brought back over twelve programs in one year. We have our graduation rate, that is up. We have our report card is up. We have great kids, we have great staff members, so there's a lot of amazing things happening. The sad part about it is the commotion that happens here, it would be so nice for the great things that your children in this community is doing is on channel eight, channel nineteen, five and Fox and so forth. Not this, the animosity, because this is what I feel like people want to see in public education and it is not. The discussions it would be nice to have and show to the media is that. The amazing things that our kids are doing and you have a municipality that has a district that is moving in the right direction. People wanna see us, this is still, I tell people, I love to hear the feedback. You should be asking the questions at the end of the day, of myself. Taylor and I have talked, I still feel like this is one of the best boards that a district can have. I'll just be honest with you. So as a district, the things that you guys have done for our special education children, our SEL programming as well, I feel like there are a lot of great things that are happening.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to the superintendent report, if we can please move on, thank you.
Good evening, board president, vice president and board members, this evening. But Gary can't hear.
Gary, are you okay back there or, okay, thank you.
Was that all of the, or the time was extended?
There was some personnel, we can't talk, we can't talk about personnel in public.
Well, even if it's, so my question is, if it's, so the question is, there's something about personnel on one of the cards and there is where you can't actually talk about personnel, but my question is, can someone speak to whatever they're talking about? We don't have to say anything back if that's the case, you can't say anything. But, so if we tell them not to mention names, can they talk about what it is that they would like to share their concern about?
I, you, as you guys have stated, you are my five bosses. So you guys can make that decision and handle that li- you know what I mean, and handle that liability. But the board attorney spoke to myself, board president and Taylor and said, where we are right now, because again, people don't know why someone's not here. And there's been a lot of assumptions and hurt individuals as a result of this. If you guys choose to try to anonymously talk about certain things, then that is up to the board for you guys to decide, but I have to publicly state that I will not be held liable.
Yes, it is going against what the board attorney informed us.
So once again, that's us saying anything, not community, correct?
Your board policy specifically states that.
Can you tell me which board policy, please?
I believe it's on the card.
Yes, give me the number.
Zero one six nine point one, it's referenced in Ohio Revised Code, three three one three point two zero.
You said that really extremely fast. What's, what's the policy?
Zero one six nine point one.
Six nine point one.
It's also Ohio Revised Code, three three one three point two zero.
There's lots of cards, all of those cards fall under that, or do you?
That is correct.
How many do you have left?
Three.
Three.
Yes. We did have, we had thirty minutes allotted and between all the back and forth, we are now past that time. And thirty minutes maximum.
Thirty, for, and the board policy states thirty minutes.
But he's correct, we did allow someone to ask three questions.
Yeah, you allow people to allow more than one question.
He was number one.
You did, you did, you said that, and we did allow someone to ask three questions.
Then you can board.
So is he able to ask, there's no question?
Because we did allow person to ask three questions.
So the statute does indicate that boards is not supposed to be a back-to-back, right? Like she said, it's a board meeting in the public and it's not supposed to be a lot of conversation, right? But we understand the situations and tensions in right now. But at the same time, the time is only given for thirty minutes and three minutes per each person. But I just asked if we can extend it just so that you, for consistency purposes. I just wanted to make sure that it doesn't. No, and you didn't get your forty minutes, so.
So I did have another question, I did ask a question about the protest, but my question was, uh, the inappropriate behavior between teachers and students. And I'm just gonna say it, I know parents don't want to talk about it, but I'm ref for OSHA. I'm a pastor, I come to every game, I'm about to go to the volleyball game, uh, the behavior is unacceptable. And parents can say, I know, I can be thrown under the bus, I don't care. I hear parents cussing out kids, I hear parents cussing out administrators, I hear parents cussing out the teachers and then they ask them to do things. It's not gonna work, but what is the board gonna do about it? Because for one, it's inappropriate behavior and it is, I noticed with Bedford, it's about popularity and who knows who. And when you get into a position and yes, everybody wants to run for something or do something, but they don't want to do it for the kids, they're doing it for their friends or for Facebook, because that's where I see it at. I don't look at Facebook all the time, but it hurts me when I see autistic kids getting jumped on. It hurts me when I see kids getting thrown through the glass over a heskett, uh, and then I don't see parents showing up to that. And then when I see the board arguing, not with, disputing with each other, it's not appropriate because for one, it shows that, one, to me, you don't like your job, because you're just arguing. Two, you have to be professional about it and it's all about respect. I heard you've been quiet, I've been watching, spirit by the spirit, but you, you're quiet, you watch people, you see how they move and how they interact. I watched from Selico to here and it's a big change, it is a big change.
Yes.
But it's also good and there's bad with everything.
Right.
And you take that and stuff that gets handled in-house is in-house and I understand all that. I was in the military for ten years, so I know about keeping stuff in-house and keeping it quiet. But when it comes to kids, my daughter, uh, she excels at everything right now and Bedford has done her will because she's on her way to get her associate. She just got nominated for National Honor Society and
Nice.
she's actually a photographer, so she's doing a lot of things and the board actually hired her to do photography. So it's not about, people don't care about the kids, but it's about the behavior of
Yes.
what the kids see and hear, because the parents are gonna leave here and believe they're gonna go home and act the same way. They're gonna tell the kids whatever happened here and then the kids are gonna reflect what happened and they will come to school with their opinions tomorrow, so the teachers have to deal with that issue. And I just want to know, how is the board gonna deal with the teachers who act inappropriate with the kids? Because if I see it again, I'm actually just gonna call the police from now on.
Well, I, I mean, for myself, if it's a teacher, any employee, whether regardless of the title or position, I think one of the things that I heard, um, when I went to one of the candidate events was they talked about accountability. And I cannot disagree anymore. And it should be regardless of your title or your position. And sometimes I know that that's very tough, but that is why I'm here. And so if there is a situation where a child is being scolded, mistreated, yelled at, first of all, that is against the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Office of Professional Conduct Standards. So a report needs to be made. And if people feel like there is not a response to that, they do have the opportunity to file a report themselves at the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. But I feel like the first step is, is that they go to that immediate, you know, if it's at the high school or the middle school or wherever, they would reach out to that building level administrator. Um, I think J.C.'s done a great job in the athletic department, um, handling issues, because I can't disagree with you. Thank you. Look. Thank you. So we're moving on to superintendent's report, please. Dr. Johnson?
Mm-hmm. Good evening, Board President, Vice President and Board Members again.
Good evening.
This evening, I have five exhibits coming before you. Under seven point zero one, we ask of your approval of the following interim or substitute administrators. Under seven point zero two, we ask of your approval of the removal and scrapping of these vehicles, this is for our career tech program. Um, he has more cars than what he needs and so he's asking for approval to go through the process to scrap those. Under, oh, this is our auction. Um, as you know, we have a lot of old equipment and things of that nature over at the maintenance building. So under seven point zero three, we're asking of your approval to utilize this company to do this. Um, if you have questions about that, Dr. Schneider's here to respond or answer to that. Under seven point zero four, we ask of your approval of the following classified personnel. And under seven point zero five, we ask of your approval of the amendment of the funding source.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna take seven point zero one. Um, may I have a motion for the administrative personnel, personnel recommendations as presented?
So moved. Second.
It has been motioned by Mrs. Boynton, second by Mrs. Macklin, that we approve the following, administrative personnel recommendations as presented, do we have any questions?
Um, I don't have any question, but just bringing back to the table, the conversation that was said earlier that we couldn't talk about, with the resignation of Mr. Rakowski. So that resignation was there because he's being approved for a hire as the interim assistant principal. So that, that's why he is being, he resigned from the previous position.
Correct. And we do have a, um, in talking with, uh, the BEA president, we do have an agreement that, um, for, uh, Mr. Rakowski to be able to go back, um, when necessary to BEA. Thank you for that question, any additional? Hearing a roll call, please.
Yes, Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
Nothing against Mr. Rakowski, love him dearly, he was my social studies teacher, but, and it's nothing against Crystal either, but I have to say no.
Mr. Akins?
Since I don't know why they're being, who they're replacing, I'm gonna say no as well.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you, passes three to, three to two. We're moving on to seven point zero two for the resolution, um, as presented, may I have a motion?
So moved.
You may have a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Mrs. Boynton, second by Mrs. Macklin, that we approve the resolution as presented. Um, Dr. Schneider, do you want to speak to this at all? I know I'm gonna have you speak to the other one, but just to give a quick update to the scrapping of the vehicles.
Good evening, Board President, Vice President and Board Members. So the scrapping of the vehicles, there's, I think it's a nineteen ninety-six Chevy, then there's a Honda Accord. So in the CTE program, they currently have six vehicles that they utilize in the shop for various repairs. We know that whatever space that the CTE Auto Tech program is going to go to when they leave the current location at the high school, was not going to have the same square footage that they have currently. So we've had conversations with the CTE teacher and obviously with Dr. Threet and kind of anticipating, you know, how things are gonna look and how we're gonna utilize space moving forward. So the teacher's been really forward thinking in terms of what's, what's the priority, how many lifts do we need? How many cars do we want to utilize for repairs with the students? These two cars need significant repairs that he doesn't want to tackle in the shop. And there are four remaining that he says is a really good amount for the work that they do.
Perfect, thank you, are there any questions for Dr. Schneider?
So with this, we're, um, gonna like junk them basically and then we'll get funds for junking them, correct? And so then we would, um, end up having that added to.
Yes, that's correct.
And I think you should stay for the next.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, um, can I have a, um, roll call?
Yes, Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
Um, yes.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes five to zero, thank you, board. We are now on to seven point zero three for the service contract as presented. Um, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
It has been motioned by Mrs. Boynton, second by Mrs. Macklin, that we approve the service contract as presented. Can you give some feedback on this too, please, thank you.
Absolutely, so we obviously have a number of variables that we're working through in terms of the movements that are going to occur and the spaces for staff and students moving forward. So it's a really, I would say, intricate plan and we are trying to break everything down, kind of pick it apart, take a reductionist approach and make it as granular as possible. So as we're doing that, kind of the end date for a lot of these movements is February first. That's when the north house needs to be vacated so that abatement and demolition can begin. And then the CTE Auto Tech program is moving as well. So that requires the south house to be vacated by the people who are there currently, which would mostly be IT and registration and some SCL staff. So working backwards from that February first date till now and just trying to think of, you know, all the different things that need to happen to get Auto Tech to their new location at the maintenance garage, to move registration and IT and then go into those spaces in the south house and prep them and then move Excel and then also to move students and the staff from the south to the north, obviously there's a lot of timing issues. So this is one of the first dominoes that, that needs to kind of occur. And it is an auction service, it's really, I would say, without a doubt, the preferred auction service for schools who are doing similar things, which obviously occurs quite often. So what we would like to do is to open up some square footage at the maintenance garage. We'll put things up for an online auction for a period of time and then there'll be a window of, you know, time when people who win that bid can come in and pick up their things. So as everybody knows, the more space that people have, the more space they fill with equipment, with materials, with whatever it is. And really simply over the course of time, the maintenance garage has a lot, it's a lot of things, some of which we don't use, some of which isn't worth the time to repair, some of which we really just don't need anymore for various reasons. So we're gonna put that up for auction, we would like to do that very quickly. And then as movements occur, when the north house is vacated, we would look to have an auction at the north house as well. So there are a couple of things really tied to that that I think are really important in terms of decommissioning spaces appropriately. And Dr. Johnson and I have had several conversations about that as well as the executive leadership team. One of them would be setting aside time for community walkthroughs of those spaces before they are decommissioned. So we have some tentative dates that we're trying to finalize. Another major piece of that is creating a committee to go through all of the pieces, the memorabilia, the artifacts that have value, emotional value and kind of historical value to the district to make sure that we have a group decision about what we're gonna maintain. And after we've done those things and then maintenance has come through to take pieces that we want to keep for various reasons, then we would like to have an auction also at the, at the north house.
Thank you, any additional questions?
So right now, this is based off of stuff that is inside the maintenance garage.
Yes, uh, the contract says the maintenance garage and also other locations, so it is written to accommodate future auctions that we would like to have, you know, not that far away, but yes.
But will we be moving the stuff out of the north side and then having the auction at the maintenance garage, I mean?
Uh, that's a good question, so we're gonna do the maintenance garage first and separately and then the north house separately. And one of the reasons why this, this vendor is really a preferred contact is because what we want to do is minimize the number of times that as a district we have to touch the material. We don't want to move it, we don't want to stage it, we don't want to have to prep it or take it to a different space to the greatest degree possible. We, we don't want, we simply don't have enough men and women to do that and coordinate it in the amount of time that we would need. So this is honestly, it's a quick, easy, very simple process and things to the greatest degree possible stay where they are and are picked up by the person who wins the bid where they are and they're responsible for getting it and leaving with it and that's it.
So we pay this company to set this auction up and then we're kind of like, ola, right?
Yes, yeah, they get a percent of the revenue.
So we pay them plus they get a percentage?
It's thirty-five percent revenue and then there's also a ten percent document fee if there's a check and I think twelve dollars, not ten percent, ten dollars and then twelve dollars if you do a reserve, a reserve auction.
It'll only be done at an auction, um, it won't be a live auction anywhere.
It would, online only.
This is, I feel like we just had a conversation with, um, Donald Jolly and they were talking about they have to do this with each of their buildings too.
Very, very common, there's, you pick a district that's either reduced the size of their footprint or created, you know, built new schools. This is, this is the route that literally every single one of them goes. There's really no other logistical and practical way to facilitate it, to be honest.
And that percentage is like standard, thirty-five percent?
That percentage is standard, um, the other, one of the other best options is the Ohio School Council. They've recently tried to also kind of capture this market a little bit. So we met with them, they, they require the school district to facilitate all of the pickup and, and, you know, meeting at the, at the location. And you could have hundreds of people who win bids and it's not even realistic to, to think that we have anyone here who has that time available to them to coordinate that and then to make sure the safety and security is there and that people can walk out with things and it's gotta be a small window that will have our safety team obviously there but also the vendor, they will have a number of individuals there, but yeah, it's absolutely a standard number.
I was just asking, um, Taylor, because yeah, in this way, just the liability is also kind of removed because of the auditing purposes behind it, um, that are required because we're a public school district when we auction things off and the company will take care of all that.
So that's pretty much inclusive within the percentage.
Correct, yes.
Any additional questions?
I would like to, uh, talk further on it, you know, a little bit more before going to approval. But I know there's a motion already on the floor, so.
I, I'm glad to answer any other questions you have or kind of maybe some of the items.
What's your timeline? Because I know this, you gotta get stuff out.
Yeah, so our, our timeline is really tight, um, it would be most advantageous if we started the auction within a couple of weeks, literally. And, you know, get everything online here very soon, two, two to three weeks at the, at the most would be that.
And we, when's our, we don't have another board meeting until after the election.
I feel like it's the sixteenth.
Yeah.
It's the sixth, damn it.
The sixth?
November sixth is the next board meeting.
November sixth.
Yes.
November sixth is our next meeting, correct.
Was this done to a bid? Like, how was this company selected?
So we met with the Ohio School Council and we met with this company Fast Track.
Okay, and no other organizations or companies were considered?
Those are the two. And those are really the two, Fa- Fast Track, which is the one that's before you for your consideration, is off the top of my head, they probably capture ninety percent of school districts who do this, which is a lot. And the Ohio School Council is, like I said, they're trying to maybe get a little bit of that. But their format and their structure of the Ohio School Council just isn't realistic, I don't think there, anyone can really agree to that because it's just too much, it's too much labor that they're placing on the school.
So is this something you want to still continue to talk about, do you want to vote on now?
I just, I just would like to do a little bit more research on, but, I mean, that's on me. My thought is to do a little bit more research, I'm just looking at that percentage rate and I get all the handling, but at the same time, trying to keep as much of the fun that we can.
Right.
It's my thought, so. And since it was only two, I mean, I know you said these are the typical type, but I would like to do my own research, but.
I can, I can also speak that, um, legal counsel did look at this contract. Legal counsel reviewed this contract for us.
Neola?
Legal counsel, legal counsel, yes.
And it's usually that high because they're doing a lot of the labor.
I get it.
Okay, so are we moving forward?
Definitely, I mean, there's a motion on the floor, so I have to move forward, yes.
Roll call.
Yes, Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
At this time, I'm gonna say no.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes four, four to one, thank you, board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna take seven point zero. Uh, we're gonna take seven point zero four, motion, um, for non-administrative personnel. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Macklin, uh, second by Mrs. Boynton, that we, um, approve the superintendent's recommendation for non-administrative personnel. Are there any questions at this time?
Are they changing roles?
So this is a amendment to the last board meeting.
It's an amendment.
We already approved her, but...
Gotcha, okay.
All right, roll call?
Yes. Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes five to zero, thank you board. Seven point zero five, um, motion for the amended funding source for service contract. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Akins, excuse me, and second by Mrs. Boynton, that we approve the amended funding source for contract. Do we have any questions regarding this?
Um, yes, why is it being, um, changed? Why are we amending this? What's the difference as to...
Dr. Harrington is coming up for you.
Thank you, Dr. Harrington.
Um, so, as we always talk about, Title I can be used for a lot of different things from the building's budget. So initially, the building wanted to pay for this, but because of all the changes with the federal guidelines, with timelines, we took on the cost from Title II, 'cause it's training. So we thought it would be better for us to take care of it from the federal lens of the district versus the building having to take care of it.
Okay.
Any additional? I was gonna say, any additional while he's here?
Nope. All right, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes five to zero, thank you board. We are now on to the treasures report. I am passing it over to you, Taylor.
Okay, thank you, Madam President, Madam Vice President, board members. Tonight, I have, uh, eight point zero one, which is information only, no actions to be taken. This is my monthly report. Um, we are trending, yeah, sorry about that. Gary, can you, can you open this for me, please? Thank you so much.
Pleasure.
Okay. Um, if you look at page three, which is the first, uh, there you go, Gary, thank you. Um, you'll see that our revenues are up from previous year. Um, our expenditures are also up from previous year, and our cash balance is down seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, lower than the previous year at this time. Um, based on our forecast, we are currently trending favorable to what was presented in the forecast by two hundred and twenty-six thousand. Um, expenditures are trending favorable by four hundred and twenty thousand, which would be a positive impact of six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And you'll look to see that our cash balance, uh, last, on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, was thirteen million, six hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight. We are estimating right now to have a cash balance of ten million, eight hundred and forty-six thousand and thirty-two dollars. Uh, the reason for the lower cash balance at the end of this year is we are continuing to deficit spend. But we are working on that, uh, based on our written plan that we passed in February twentieth, and other, uh, cuts that we have made since then. So, um, that's the written report. There's more information in there that I can ask, or answer any questions about. I did wanna note a positive thing. We, uh, and it was in, I believe, Cleveland dot com, we had just received an additional amount of money of four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, three ninety-five and fourteen cents. This is, uh, happens every six years. The county, uh, kind of holds back some money when they're doing the, uh, reassessment of property taxes in the county. And, uh, this time around, we receive that amount. I did do a little bit of research back in two thousand and eighteen, when this happened, six years ago. At that point, we received an additional hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven seventy-one and eighty-eight cents. So, a very nice jump, about almost three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, like I said, we continue to deficit spend, but this helps things like this. Uh, I wish I would get letters like this every month, 'cause we'd be in a lot of shit.
Don't we all?
And then, uh, item number eight point zero two, gifts and donations. We did receive a donation from Panzeca Construction Company. They are the company that is, uh, helping our bond, our, uh, buildings being built. Um, they donated thirty-five hundred dollars in teacher supplies to Bedford High School, Carrollwood, and Glendale. They chose these three schools because these schools had not received donations this year, so they specifically picked the ones that we had not received money for. To kind of even out what everyone has received this year. And then Pratt Trunki- Trucking donated one thousand and eighty dollars for the BHS Lady Bearcat basketball uniform. So thank you Pratt, and thank you Panzeca.
Thank you so much. Uh, we're on to eight point zero one for, um, this was just information. Um, thank you for that information. It's always good to hear that we can get the approved, you know, the money in to help us. It's not, you know, it, it, it's doing a little bit, so I appreciate that. Does anybody have any comments about the treasures report?
Um, I just have one, um, 'cause I know we were like doing great, but expenditures being a little down, um, and we were trending towards that. What is with the, the difference here?
Is your microphone on?
Oh, no.
Uh, what is the difference, um, in the expenditures?
As far as it being higher than last year.
For spending?
It's mainly personnel and, uh, salaries and benefits. Um, we, we did have a raise for the classified union with a step. And then, um, BEA and the admin and specialists did have a freeze for their salary this year, but they did get a step. Which is, on average, about two percent. It varies from different classification, but on average. So even though, um, all those people did take the freeze in salary, they did get the step, which was an increase in spending.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? All right, we're gonna go to eight point zero two, gifts and donations. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve donations as presented?
Second.
It has been motioned by Mr. Akins and second by Mrs. Macklin that we approve the donations as presented. Um, do we have any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
Yes.
And Ms. Carter?
Yes, thank you, passes five to zero. I just wanna say thank you Panzeca, um, for providing the teachers with supplies, um, at the high school Carrollwood and Glendale. That is, I'm sure it's gonna do tremendous help there. Um, and to Pratt Trucking for assisting Our Lady Bearcats, so thank you so much. Anyone else?
One of the things, um, about Panzeca as well, when you chose them, I think one of the appealing things was that they talked about, um, providing opportunities for our students. Um, to be involved, and so we have had conversations about the career tech programs going over, um, and on site. So, you should be hearing more about that as well in the coming weeks, um, with our kids getting opportunities.
Thank you so much for that. All right, we are on to nine point zero one, building permits and facilities requests. Uh, may I have a motion for the request as presented?
Uh, some of...
Second.
It has been motioned by Mrs. Turner Birch and second by Mr. Akins that we approve the facilities request as presented. Are there any questions, um, regarding this? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Turner Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
And Ms. Carter?
Yes, passes five to zero, thank you board. We are on to nine point zero two, second reading and approval of our revised board policies. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the revisions of the board policies as presented.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It has been motioned by Mrs. Boynton, second by Mrs. Macklin, that we approve, um, the revisions of the board policies as presented. Any questions?
I have, well, I kinda like questions and comments to a couple of them. Um, I am gonna go to policy two-two-six-six. Um, now I gotta try to bring it back up on my own. It is regarding the informal complaint. If you can jump to it for me, because I can't find it on my tab that's open.
You said it's the formal.
It's, it's referring to inform, the informal complaint process, and, and what is the standard?
The formal complaint or in?
Informal, informal complaint process. For two-two-six-six.
I'm trying to find the informal, give me one moment.
'Cause I'm trying to flip back from the old board meeting to, to this one.
This is just informal?
Informal, informal resolution, you mean?
No.
I'm trying to find the formal complaint.
Informal complaint, it's, it's down some. It's like probably on the fourth page, third page.
That's a dismissal of formal complaint.
Says informal.
Complaint, emergency removal.
It's under supportive, uh, supportive services. Or, uh, supportive measures. It's down somewhere. Go to page five then. See now, I can't even see that far. I can see what came.
Two-two-six-six.
Two-two-six-six.
Well, page ten has informal resolution process.
Okay, yes, so the informal resolution process. What I was referring to in this one is...
Where are you at on that page?
So informal resolution process?
The bottom of page ten.
It is the resolution process.
So if an informal complaint is filed, um, to the parties, the informal resolution, the parties mutually agree to participate. And it doesn't need a trained individual to facilitate. I know it was in this part. Oh, here it is. So the informal resolution process is not available to resolve allegations that a board employee or another adult member of the school district, community, or third party, why are we clicking that it is not available?
The informal resolution process is not available.
Yes, what is that inferring? Why wouldn't it be available?
I hate this chair. The informal resolution process is not available. To resolve. That a board employee or another member of the school district or third.
Or third party.
Sexually, it's about sexual harassment of a student.
Right.
So they can't...
So an informal process, it doesn't go into informal process? It's only gonna be a formal complaint? Is there's no option? Is that what this is saying now? 'Cause I know before it was, you could, you had an option of filing an informal or a formal.
Because of, you can't resolve a sexual abuse or sexual harassment. We were told by a counselor, by a board member, you know what I mean? Like, how do you resolve that? It goes like first you call like six-nine-six kids, you know what I mean?
Just for employees, so board employees, okay. So this, it, so when I've read others, I'm also thinking students aren't involved with that as well. Because earlier in the top, it talks about also students. It says board employees, students, and third party.
This is, this one is talking about, um, it's not available to resolve allegations that a board employee or another adult of the school district, community sexually harasses a student.
So only for that, okay, all right. So that's what I just needed to be clear to, to, that informal process, okay. Um, then the other question I had, policy thirty-one thirty, talking about teacher assignments.
Yeah, that's the new law.
Um, but there's one thing, not even just a strikeout, but one of the things that was on, did you bring it up?
One of the things, um, that it mentions in this policy, since we're on it, is that the superintendent shall be responsible for the proper assignment and transfer of all teaching and other professional staff members, and shall attempt to effect the optimum assignment of professional staff to positions based on the best interest of students enrolled in the district.
Not to strike up a whole nother conversation, but since we're on this policy, um, I know that there has been some teacher assignments that have been shifted. And I don't feel that they have been in the best interest of the, of the students in some of those capacities. Now, I do see that it says considerations shall also be given to legal and contractual requirements, seniority or continuing contract status may be used. Um, but, mm, let's negotiate it. Also, even teachers who may be in assignments, though they may be certified K six, and were predominantly teaching, for example, ELA, and now are teaching science, and they haven't taught science, there, is that still in the best interest of the child?
It depends on the situation, and, um, first of all, like, in this language, we also have to think about, there's contract language that we go by. So in our contract language, seniority or nothing, and that is actually the new law as well. Um, under the law, we don't, you can't consider it, um, as well. There is a teacher effectiveness form, um, I don't know if Dr. Harrington wants to speak to that, but there's a whole process that is followed in order to move people or reassign people. Also, it comes down to staffing. For example, if I have, um, less kids desire to take such and such a class, then I need to have more teachers over here because if kids chose that, I gotta let somebody go over here. That person might be dual certified. Right? So I can't disagree with you in that it's not always in the best interest, but the contract says that person has a right to a job. So therefore, this is that open position, and they also have a certificate for it. I'm required to offer them that opportunity. So that is where you might see that happen. The same thing happens at the primary grade levels as well. You might have a person that has not taught kindergarten in I don't know how many years, but if they were previously teaching second grade, and I don't have as many second graders coming up, I have less, but I, they have to go down and teach kindergarten.
So in that, um, is there additional?
And that's not of me, but that's the principal making recommendations in, within the building. I don't make changes from, um, I don't make recommendations, I just don't say, okay, this teacher's gonna go teach fifth grade. Like, everybody comes together, actually, we're all in this room, I think, Taylor, like, it's a whole process. We meet, we actually start in November, and it goes all the way till March. Um, but the principals make recommendations based upon their data, and that, there's like a whole form that they complete. And then they come, and then they say, Dr. Johnson, I would like to move this person here, that person there. Um, also, I'm down at the high school, therefore, I need a person to go down to middle school. They make recommendations. And the principals get in the room and talk about who can go where based upon the licensure, as well as if we're riffing the seniority.
It's also very fiscally responsible, responsible to do this, and it should be done every year.
So a question on ISs though, and I know we're kind of short on ISs, but if an individual is certified to be an intervention specialist, but has not operated in that capacity, that's still also operating in the best interest of a child if they're put into that role and haven't done IEPs?
Um, well, we, that's why we have professional development. So you have to weigh, do you want the district to be sued because you're not servicing a child? Or I have this certified teacher over here, even though they might not have taught it, they went to school for it. So then that is up for us as a district to provide them with the professional development and training to support them to go teach that. Um, I will say it is very difficult right now. I, 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 being in special education in general, in the paper... Um, I will say it is very difficult right now. I, 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 being in special education in general and the paperwork, your OTs, your PTs, all of this, they're making it so difficult. And let's not even talk about the laws.
They just literally closed down.
Yeah, for IDEA is a whole different issue because they closed down that department. But, um, but yes, it is tough because, yeah, you're gonna have a person that has maybe not been writing IEPs forever.
But couldn't that also be a liability though? Because if they haven't written them and there may not, and I get it, you get professional development. But that professional development can take some time. And if they're already put into the role and now they have to do this and leverage this, I don't know how many students, um, but a caseload. If it's not familiar, the kid could still be losing time in service, right?
Um, if they don't follow the law, yes, but you have been amazing as well as providing us with the opportunity to have compliance officers. So as a board, um, you have permitted, um, myself, I made a recommendation when I came for us to increase the number of compliance officers. So we do have IEP slash five oh four compliance officers, and that is exactly what they do. They go through day in and day out. I think the staff can tell you, they pull randomly IEPs and go through them. Also, um, we have the opportunity to provide people with a mentor, um, in that field to also go through and guide them on how to do it. I think the worst thing that we can do is say, okay, go over there and teach and just do it. I feel like also I'm hearing a lot of our staff talk about their colleagues, um, and then wrapping their arms around their colleagues to support them. Um, because it it is a very difficult position to fill. Um, Cleveland State just got rid of one of their education programs. So it it is very, very, um, tough right now.
So with, um, any positions being open, we have students that could be losing time or not being, um, serviced right now?
They get compensatory time if they have not received it. Um, we have to make that up and it's done outside of the, the, you know, the school day or even sometimes you gotta offer them extended school year.
Is that being, you know, addressed and taken care of right now?
Mm-hmm. It's just like if you haven't taught it, and I I can use myself as an example. I was an intervention specialist, but I was in a subcontinent classroom teaching all subjects in third grade. And I never did write an IEP because I wasn't in that role. But it's just like hiring a new teacher. They haven't written the IEP, trust me, when they come in. But because of the support of their colleagues and all the, uh, uh, professional development and, you know, it's just a lot of people that help us along when we haven't, you know, been in that position, just to get it done. And what we do is not just writing the IEP where if the IEP is written, but the service that is provided. So we look at that a lot, and I'm sure, and I know that we have great people working here, and I know there are people that are reaching out helping their colleagues and everything else we have involved in providing that service. We're not gonna allow a child, I know in this school district, we're not allowing a child not to have the service that, excuse me, that they need and has been written and decided where they're, uh, what they need for their IEP. I just believe that a person is doing that. And I think that with the people we do put in a position, they say, well, I haven't done this. Well, we're getting ready to do it now, but you have the help in place. That's one thing that teachers do. They are going to help each other because we all want to do what's best for children.
I just wanna make sure the service, but not just the student being serviced, but if there's a particular class that needs an IS or an inclusion, specifically an inclusion class that may need an IS and they may not have one, what are we doing to kinda feel that so that those students are being serviced and that teacher is having the support?
Um, I will tell you.
Or those teachers rather.
I really appreciate our, our. I really appreciate our teachers because they're being stretched.
Yes.
Um, they're taking on extra right now. Um, I agree with you, Mrs. Boynton, in terms of that staff, our special education staff, um, in the work that they do, especially not only ISs, but it is so hard to find speech pathologists. And the number of kids that they're taking on. Um, but I feel like I can't thank the the sped teachers enough, um, for taking extra on. Um, yeah. You have seen previously for our OTs, PTs, or speech pathologists where we've, um, given them like a stipend or something of that for the extra stuff that they do, but that's unfortunately, we've actually had to look outside the district, you know, with agencies. But as you know, that's more expensive, like the employee isn't getting paid more. The agency is taking that money. Um, so we always look to hire internally first.
Um, does that have to be negotiated?
Um, no, we have to post it first. Um, and then if we can't fill it, then like it's kinda like going through the ESC and getting a long-term sub.
Gotcha. Okay. And the last thing, um, thank you for your patience. Um, I saw there was a couple revised and and some of them were on the anti-discrimination, um, that I saw were being revised. Why are we revising that? For instance, example, policy five two, fifty-two, twenty-three, fifty-two hundred. Um, and they were already revised this year already, back in April, I believe, April fourth or twenty-five. Those two particular policies were already revised. So what, how would we have to revise it in the same year?
Um, I feel like we would have to go back to the notes from the policy meeting that we had and kinda see because, I don't know if something, I honestly, because we had so many policies.
Yeah, and unfortunately, because I wasn't given advance enough, asked about, what did I brought up last time? Asked about the time and availability. I would have had all of these discussions, of course, as y'all know. Um, but since I wasn't, you know, there.
Who said possibly a house bill?
House bill?
I believe it was a house bill that, uh.
Is that the diversity equity? No, not that one, not fifty-two.
I think it was ninety-six, but I'm not a hundred percent sure about that.
Okay, so fifty-two, twenty-three, and fifty-two hundred.
That was fifty-two, twenty-three I'm referring to.
Okay.
You said fifty-two hundred was the other one?
Yeah, fifty-two hundred is the other one. Oh, yeah, it was about attendance. What changed on that one? Cause it was just April third was when it was revised.
I can't remember offhand, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, well, I mean, I'll go ahead and approve it, but I just want, I had questions to that. And then the rescinded ones, policy sixteen, sixty-two, fourteen, twenty-two, and thirty-one, twenty-two, um, are being rescinded and why? And I think that's the anti-discrimination ones. Or non-discrimination. So since we do have questions on those and we need notes, can we pull fifty-two, twenty-three, fifty-two hundred, sixteen, sixty-two, fourteen, twenty-two, and thirty-one, twenty-two until there's some reasoning behind those, some notes?
I think so. I don't think there's a time, like the.
A timeline for it, yes. If we can pull those and approve the other ones, just so there's information, um, so why?
We would need a motion for that.
Right, oh, so right, there is a motion on the table right now.
There is.
Um, or do you mind if we do that? Can we dead this motion and then make a new one to remove those?
So is everybody okay with deadening the motion? And then starting a new motion to rescind those? You said it was, or not rescind them, but re- take those off, remove those, what was it, three of them, you said?
It's five.
Five of them to review or approve the other ones? Okay, so can I have a motion to, uh, remove the initial?
We'll have to say no to it. He'll have to do roll call.
Okay, so we'll have to do roll call.
I'm sorry, um, I believe the motion was by Ms. Boynton, Ms. Boynton?
No.
Ms. Macklin?
No.
Ms. Turner Birch?
No.
Mr. Akins? Ms. Carter?
No.
Um, now I make a motion to approve the policies except, um, fifty-two, well, policies that have been presented except excluding, excluding fifty-two, twenty-three, fifty-two hundred, sixteen, sixty-two, fourteen, twenty-two, and thirty-one to twenty-two to be, um, reconsidered with added notes.
Sorry, can you say the last three? I have fifty-two hundred, fifty-two, twenty-three, I believe.
Sixteen, sixty-two.
Okay.
Fourteen, twenty-two, and thirty-one, twenty-two. Thirty-one, twenty-two.
Alright, just so we have it clear, uh, fifty-two hundred, fifty-two, twenty-three, fourteen, twenty-two, sixteen, sixty-two, and thirty-one, twenty-two.
Correct.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
It has been moved by Mrs. Turner Birch and second by Mrs. Macklin that we remove the following policies and, uh, move those to the next meeting until further clarification, clarification is given and approve the rest. Roll call please.
Yes. Ms. Turner Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, thank you, board. Uh, we are now on to nine point zero three, specialist contractual agreement. May I have a, uh, motion, please? Can I have a motion for the, um, nine point zero three specialist contractual agreement?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Mrs. Macklin, second by Mr. Akins. Do we have questions regarding this? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes, um, Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Ms. Turner Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, thank you, board. Five, it passes five to zero. Thank you. Um, any additional information anyone would like to discuss?
I just have a comment, you know, um, I understand emotions are heightened and there's a lot going on. I feel like there's a lot of things that have not been spoken to and said, as well as there has been a lot that has been said. Um, and I just really feel that we need to, as a board, explore those things based off of information that has been received. So I am choosing to make a motion for us to either place the superintendent on leave and or ask for her resignation. Um, due to certain things that have been going on.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, all I'm gonna say is I'm so glad that this is on live TV, um, because nothing has even happened. Like, there's all these assumptions out here. And I wanna apologize to all of our employees and union members that had the courage to do what was right. We ask ourselves why we have leaders in office right now.
What is Robert's rule?
This is, this is why.
Is when there's a motion made, something needs to be said after it, then there can be a discussion. If you'd like to be a discussion, we can have that discussion. Can I have a second?
This was not, this was not on the agenda. What'd you say?
This was not on the agenda.
I understand it's not, but this is new business and old business, and neither is when I talk about the celebrations of the month and awarenesses and what's coming up next is also something that's not on the agenda either.
We, we, we can't do a motion for something that's not on the agenda. It can be discussed, but there can be, there's, there can be no motion.
I don't need a show. I have something to say all the time. I don't need a show. I say it in any board meeting without anybody here. No problem.
And there's, there's been no second, so.
Is there a second?
It's all on you.
Okay.
There's no second.
And it can be on me. Just know it's on the record. If we can, if we can just put other people on leave, I mean, it's the board. We, we hire and we keep and we keep on and we let go the treasurer and the superintendent. And based off of information that has been received, we get people put on leave and information that has been received, I feel that it is still warranted that I can ask for that. It has been done before in the past, and I'm saying it now so that we can have conversations with our board attorney if necessary, and it would be necessary so that we can explore, create, get, uh, gather evidence and investigate the allegations and things that have been going on too. I just feel like that's consistent and fair. But we don't have a second, so that's fine.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to ten. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
So the meeting notice said an executive session, are we not having that?
We send a message out saying that we are not having that.
Okay, I didn't get that message.
Second.
Okay.
Um, it has been motioned by Mrs. Boynton and second by Mrs. Macklin that we adjourn the meeting. Um, thank you everyone for coming. Next meeting will be on November sixth. See you then. Meeting adjourned.